We're live.
Ladies and gentlemen, present and those buyers soon. I would like to welcome you to the Thursday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-two, a meeting of the Bellingham Planning Board. The first meeting in the agenda this evening is a continued public hearing on Prospect Hill Estates. Jim, can you bring us up the date of what's happening?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Jim Kupfer, Town Planner. Just since our last meeting, the applicant and our peer review engineer have engaged in a review of the initial plan set that's before the board at this time. We have in receipt our first review, peer review by BSC, both looking at the planning boards, rules and regulations for subdivisions, stormwater, but also conservation's notice of intent. So it's a complete package that's before you this evening. Meanwhile, the applicant has gone before a conservation at least once, maybe, maybe twice at this point. And you also have in your package a letter from conservation as to the status of that. Thirdly, you have a letter from the Franklin Planning Board expressing some concerns over access. And each of those are in your packet this evening. This is a continued hearing of the definitive subdivision. And our peer review engineer Dominic is here and certainly can review his peer review when the time is appropriate.
Thank you. I'd like to have you introduce yourself, please.
Excuse me. My name is Lou Petrosi, Wall Street Development Corp. I have with me Rob Truax from GLM Engineering, Project Engineer. And as Jim has indicated, we did submit revised plans that are being reviewed or have been reviewed by the peer reviewers for both the Conservation Commission and Planning Board. We have had sit walks and or hearings with the Conservation Commission over the last several weeks. And we're here. This is the first time we've been back since we received the peer review comments on August third. So we really had a chance to talk with the consultant or anything like that. So.
The floor is yours. The floor is yours, sir.
Okay, so what would the board prefer were to review the plan or I think.
I'd like to get, have you bring us up your date?
Okay.
Where you've been and where you want to go.
Yeah, okay. Why don't you go through the revisions that we made as a result of.
Sure. So since the last time we submitted plans, there were several comments from Conservation Commission that we tried to address with the last revision. Some pertain to the drainage basins, the location of those, you know, the setbacks to the wetlands and where they could be positioned on the site. So we made some modifications to those, revised that drainage report accordingly, submitted a new drainage report. We also made some changes to the lots within the subdivision to accommodate the upland requirements under their bylaw. It says that you're not allowed to use riverfront area as upland. So we had to modify some of the lots within the subdivision. We still have a couple lots. It did not have the upland requirement, even though it shows lots, we did list the upland that's on that lot. So you can see that it's not meeting a requirement. So there's two lots within this subdivision that don't have the required upland. The other ones in the back, we took two lots and combined them to make one. So we really just have, it's not a twelve watt subdivision in the back. It's actually eleven, in which two of them would not be building in their current configuration. So it's really now like nine. I did notice that, looking through the comments, that we have not received a review of the drainage report of the drainage study. So this, this review that you have before you is just basically subdivision regulations and zoning and wetlands. So they have not, far as I understand from what I've read, unless you've received something since, we have not received anything on the review of the drainage study that we've done with the project.
Okay.
So we don't have that yet. So. I mean, I think it would probably be in best interest of everyone to just go through the comments, the planning board comments, not the wetland ones. The planning board ones with the consultant having go through them and we can maybe talk a little bit about them, get a feel for the board or some of them. There's only a few we have questions on.
I, I think I'd rather proceed to hear from Lou first and then our peer review.
Sure.
Before I go back to our comments, because I think some things have changed since then. So I think now that we have the peer review, I think that's significant. So Lou, is there anything you want to add?
Well, yeah, a couple of general overview comments relative to the subdivision itself. And they have somewhat related to the comments that are made by the peer reviewer. One has to do with proposed access to the site. As you know, the access is proposed from Prospect Street, which is in the town of Franklin. It extends into the town of Bellingham, where the subdivision is actually being proposed. We're not applying for a subdivision approval in the town of Franklin. That access is really going to be an access right of way, easement, so to speak. And it will be just an avenue for the subdivision to have access onto the public play. We're not proposing that Franklin be involved in the subdivision approval process. There were no lots being created in Franklin, and so this is the subdivision is a hundred percent in the town of Bellingham. The second thing is related to, and we can get into this when we discuss the drainage aspects of it, but my philosophy over the years has been to create homeowners associations to maintain stormwater basins. My experience has been that the towns don't have the manpower or the time, the ability to maintain the basins. So we create a homeowners association that will provide funds and a maintenance program under the O and M plan for those basins to be cut and maintained throughout the year. Just doesn't seem practical to put that burden on the towns because they simply just don't, they just can't be kept up. And the second thing that would go along with that is that we read in the regulations that you have a requirement for a six-foot fence to be installed around detention basins, which our detention basins have been designed to be very shallow, they're less than two, two and a half feet deep, I think is the greatest amount. And so we would ask that the board not require that six-foot chain fence to be required.
Okay.
And also not to have the detention basin be on its own separate lot. Because we think that the basins will be dry, you know, most of the time, and that they'd be usable areas for yacht areas for people who own the adjacent, wherever the basins are located. So those two or three items there in terms of from a design and a maintenance standpoint, that's how we would be proposing this to happen. And to try to eliminate as much of a burden to the town if possible. We haven't heard anything, any feedback from either police or fire regarding any comments regarding like fire protection or that kind of thing. So we haven't really met with anybody to discuss any issues that might be raised. But I think the peer reviewer made the comment that because we're all proposing wells, there is no, you know, town water that's available there for those kinds of things might have to be flushed out a little bit as we get further into the, you know, final design of the project. So.
Understandable.
Yeah, so that's really kind of where I'm coming from. We still have a lot of design criteria that needs to be considered by the Conservation Commission. And so this is, as Jim had mentioned, this is just sort of a first flush of comments.
Yeah.
And we've previously outlined a few waivers that were, that the peer reviewer has discussed, some of which I've just mentioned about detention basin fencing and on individual lots and so on and so forth. So. The one other thing that was mentioned by the peer reviewer was about the, the station between a lane and a minor street, I think it was, or a street. So we've chosen to go with a larger width of roadway. If it turns out that the project, you know, we can always modify it to go lesser, but we'd probably, we'd prefer to stay with a larger size layout at this point. And if there's no objections from the planning board, I don't know what other issues there would be relative to the maintenance of that roadway going forward, but we've.
I think those particulars we'll address.
Okay.
As they come up. Is Dominic here?
I am. Mr. Chairman, good evening. Dominic Bialdi, BSC Group Peer Reviewer.
I'm at the floor is yours.
Okay, I guess I would ask, how would you like to?
I'll just give you overview comments.
Yes, so on the, on the, just to update, as I think Mr. Truax said, we have not given them the stormwater, the strictly stormwater more. We did address some stormwater points that they come up in, in zoning and the subdivision regs, but not more of the Lawns Protection Act, Stormwater Standards side. We actually have that now. We're going to give that to the town tomorrow. So this is a big one. So we sort of pieced it out a little bit. Trying to get the pertinent pieces out when we could and with summer vacations and things, it's, it's been a little tough. So overall, you know, I believe one of the comments, Mr. Mr. Kupfer mentioned the letter from the town of Franklin and the applicant just kind of addressed some of that. That was one of our first general comments is on the letter from the town addressing, you know, their, you know, their local regulations with regard to access to, I forget the exact wording, but it's basically prohibiting a road in Franklin, providing access to an undeveloped property in another town. And kind of resolving that and how that works, it felt a little chicken and eggish to tell the truth is.
Sorry.
I say sorry, that their, their rag felt a little chick, you know, is it the chicken or egg? How do you get a developed property in another town off a road without putting a road in? So I, it was, it was about just resolving those, those aspects with, with the two towns in addition to services provided where the, the residents will be in Bellingham. But obviously, the, the access point is, is in Franklin, just coordinating that. I believe the applicant said they, they haven't heard anything back from the fire and police departments yet. And certainly that's a part of it. I think he did sort of address a couple of the comments about, you know, ownership and maintenance of of the drainage system in particular, but of all aspects. I guess one question we had on our end at BSC is there's nineteen total lots, but the subdivision is really only talking about the house lots off the road itself. Are the other lots, are they part of the subdivision? Kind of a, a little bit of a clarification on, on how that's all working out. The, you know, there's a bunch of, they show conceptual houses on ten lots. There's a bunch. And it was just unclear to us from the standpoint where we know some are not buildable, some are buildable. We wanted just a little clarification for, for our end, so we know exactly what we're looking at. And kind of a what, do they have any thoughts on the, if there are unbuildable lots, what, what's going to be the end? Sort of use of those? Are there, are they looking at conservation restrictions? Are they looking at a playground possibility? You know, are they just going to be kind of empty lots that sit there? As the applicant mentioned, there are several waivers in there. We commented, say waiver requests, we commented on a lot of these. Most of them are, are more you know, administrative type waivers, not a lot of design waivers. A couple of things I would like to point out is they did ask for a waiver from the subdivision requirement for doing soil tests every three hundred feet within the roadway and one per lot. They've done, I believe, nine on the property. They're all very similar. You know, our understanding is this was like a formal, former gravel sand mining location. The only thing we'd like to point out about that, though, there is also another section in the subdivision that says if you don't do this sort of pre-characterization and determination of groundwater, that you have to put sub drains in, in the roadway itself. I just want to point that out for everybody's education. They requested a waiver from the environmental analysis and we'll start with the concept that a lot of that is going to happen at conservation. And while certainly a lot of the environmental analysis is going to happen at conservation, perhaps a little more detail or perhaps a, if the Board of Health has looked at this from the standpoint of where all of these lots are going to be on septic with wells and, you know, the impacts from that and the suitability of, of the site for, for that. Traffic impact analysis, really, it's, it's pretty small. We don't expect a, a big traffic impact analysis, but we would maybe request the trip generation counts, which isn't a big lift, to verify that it doesn't exceed the threshold for a full TIA. And also stopping an intersection site distance from, on the roadway, just to ensure at the intersection, to ensure that that's adequately provided. Yep, sorry.
Is that it?
Oh, no, there's a lot. So I'm just, I'm kind of scrolling through it as I go because I have to refresh my memory too. Landscaping plans or stuff you'll probably do later. A couple of the things that aren't a big deal. Nice distance calculations. And they, they mentioned, as the applicant mentioned, the, the scale of it does meet the required, the town's requirement is a lane, which can be a, a narrower right of way and a narrower paved street section. They're meeting the requirements of a minor street. You know, that's kind of entirely up to, to the, to the board, in our opinion. Most of the other stuff in there, he kind of addressed. And most of it is just stuff that was pointed out. Yeah, on, on the scale, on the scale of the zoning and subdivision rights, I don't think there's anything massive in here. The biggest things I would say are, are really, you know, any potential issues with access from the town of Franklin and certainly that fire department review because there isn't a public water supply. So if, God forbid, something happens out there in the future, how would the, the fire department handle that?
Yeah, the detention bonds. What's the depth?
I think they're average two feet, two and a half feet.
One of them's three feet, actually. One's just over one foot depth. And the other's two point seven. That's the hundred-year flood elevation in the pond.
Okay, but you said they'll be in the backyard of the homeowner, correct?
Well, I don't know exactly how they're.
Actually. So there's one right here on the, off the roadway that houses, this is actually in the front yard of this particular house.
On his lot, on their lot.
On that lot.
Okay.
And then this one here is actually, this is one big lot now because of the upland requirement. So it's way over on the side of the lot. This just happens to be open area now. It's all area of the strip. But the riverfront comes way up here. So this is really the usable upland that we could calculate. So that lot changed. So that was two lots. Now it's one. And then this one just, this is the one that's only a foot deep. It's just elongated, elongated.
Right.
So it ran down.
Drainage basin, okay.
Very shallow.
Yeah, that's, well, my concern is how quickly that going to drain?
The soils out there are very good, very rapid permeability is out there. So they're going to drain quite quickly.
What's quite quickly?
I can give you a time on them. I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can calculate times. I have them in my report.
My, my concern to being on their lot. Say you get a flash flood downpour.
Yep.
And then fills up. Little Johnny sitting in the back door. Soon as the storm's over, he sees the swimming pool. He's going to want to go swimming. My concern is liability for that homeowner with that being in the backyard. That's why we fenced these in. The safety. That's my concern.
Yeah, no, I understand. And I think that in, in other communities where I've done this, it's worked out pretty good in terms of they're, they're maintained and they're, if, if that detention basin ends up being not maintained by the town, for example, it'll get overgrown and trees will grow in it and they won't function the way it's supposed to function. So in this particular site, this was an old gravel operation that was on site. Soils are two-minute per material everywhere we've been on the site. As Rob mentioned, that's for a hundred-year storm, the maximum depth is two point seven feet. And for most storms that are like in the one-inch category, storms that water is just going to just drain over twenty-four hours.
Yeah, that's, that's my biggest concern, that being full of a hot.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I can give you the other numbers. I can provide you like a small, like that storm, we get to say we get that two inches of rain.
Exactly.
I can give you the number of how quickly.
I believe we do four foot, six foot fence, we usually do a four foot.
Well, it's a six foot according to the.
All the pens.
We can, we can discuss that as we move on.
Sure.
I need your higher things to, higher parts to, you know, with right now.
That's all I have. Thank you.
I have a question about access and the, and the, the letter from Franklin. Are you, how are you going to deal with Franklin?
Not dealing with Franklin at all. They don't have any rights. It's not a subdivision in Franklin. And we're, it's just like a driveway, basically, that we're constructing to connect to a subdivision roadway. And, and quite frankly, I, I don't want to get into legal aspects of it, but we've discussed this with our council. That regulation, I don't know anybody in court that would uphold that regulation. Cannot, under the regulations, if you design a subdivision according to the regulations of the town that you're in, you're entitled to improve it. So Franklin, I don't know why they did it, but you cannot deny people the right to access their land from another town. This, this doesn't make any sense. So. But it's just going to be an easement, access utility easement for the road.
So I guess my question is for Jim. Part of what we have to do is determine if they have access to the site. How do we do that? If it's a.
Right, so I, I think it's a valid question. I, I, I mean, and I think Lou's, or the applicant is already working on a, it sounds like working on a response for you guys. I mean, with the now understanding that Franklin does have that bylaw in place, I mean, the, the, the ask to the applicant is going to be to clarify adequate access. I mean, that's really what subdivision control law, that's step one, adequate access to your lots. And you have about ten thousand square feet in Franklin, short, that limits you from getting to these lots. So, I mean, right now, as Franklin has stated, you don't have the ability to access these lots. That's just Franklin's statement. I mean, I think if you, if the applicant has evidence and, and some thoughts on how to, how to overachieve that, then they certainly could provide that to the board.
Mr. Jim, may I just say?
I just want.
Okay.
Get to Jeff for one more.
Go ahead.
Jim, in the letter, it's from a town of Franklin planning. I want to quote the public, so they know what we're talking about here. This letter is received on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. The planning board, this is for the town of Franklin, is also concerned about which town is responsible for services, fire, police, et cetera, that will attend to the proposed subdivision. The preliminary plan fails to provide roadway detail. If the roadway is to become a public septic road, the applicant is required to file a definitive subdivision plan for the town of Franklin. Thank you for your time and consideration, the concerns expressed by this board from the chairman of Franklin Planning Board. I think this letter is rather robust, and I believe it needs to be addressed. I don't think we can move forward a lot without addressing this document.
Well, let me just say that, that the, the premise of their letter is based on a subdivision rule and regulation, not a zoning bylaw. And secondly, if you want a legal opinion, we'd be happy to provide a legal.
Oh, I, I assume, Jim, we'll reach out to our attorney?
Right, so yes, I, I think if the applicant would like to provide a legal opinion and our council can certainly review that, absolutely.
So I, I really think until we get a clarification, you know, when we put in the car before the horse.
Well, we're, we're proceeding with a, with a subdivision application.
Okay, that's fine.
You know, if, if the town, if the planning board decides that that is the reason for denial, then they deny it.
Okay, my just, that is a threshold we have to deal.
Sure, I'm gonna see.
So. So another question for Jim. Jim, that's. So we require that the detention basins be built on their own lots, right?
Right, so the, the thought process here, and you know, every town does it different. So I understand why the applicant has pursued this, this avenue. Bellingham historically, though, has required these basins on a separate lot because the understanding is the road and infrastructure will be public, will be maintained by the town. And you guys, as the board has, have seen that over the years, a lot of roads that were initially private and have been petitioned to, to become public and rising, raising those standards to become public, it becomes the onus of the town essentially at that, at this point, because of just the, where they stand. So historically, in the last several years, you know, this board and, and the town in general has, has looked to have the road designed as public and the basins on separate lots so that DPW can go out there and mow a few times a year. That's not to say it's always been that way, but that's just historically recently how DPW has liked it and how the board has, has requested it be designed and how the subdivision regs required.
And then, I guess this is a question for our peer reviewer or, or anyone really is, what is the distinction between a lane and a minor lane and a street or whatever that is? There are advantages, disadvantages? I don't know if that's new.
Jim, would you like me to take that?
Yeah, go ahead, Dominic.
Yeah, go for it.
Again, Tom Charlie. So basically, it's, it's a distinction of, I think there's three categories of streets in Bellingham, if, if I remember right. Lane, minor street, and I think it's Collector Street is the third one. And it's basically just a scale of this, of the street. I have to sorry, scroll back in my notes here, but I believe a lane is defined as a road that doesn't, that has twelve or fewer dwellings on it with frontage on it, which this would categorize for. And it's basically just the scale of the street. The, the biggest difference between the two is a lane has a narrow right of way and a narrower roadway width. I think it's twenty-two feet of, of actual curb to curb, and they're proposing twenty-six, which meets and right of way width is, which meets the minor street designation. And a minor street is bigger than a lane. And forgive me, I don't remember where the limit is for a collector street. But so it's, it's, you know, probably most of your streets are minor streets with, you know, your, your more significant roads being collectors. And then you have, you know, minor side streets, or sorry, not minor side, lanes as, as side streets.
So, so what's the? What's the? What am I looking for? What's the difference?
So basically, this, this subdivision road could be designed as a lane from what I'm reading in terms of the size, which would just be a narrower street, less pavement, you know, smaller impacts, a smaller right of way, you know, less pavement leads to. You know, smaller impacts, a smaller right of way, you know, less pavement leads to a lot of things. Stormwater runoff, smaller stormwater management features, you know, when you really wanna get down into the weeds. You know, less heat island effects, etc., etc. I mean, all the things that come with pavement and. Why we need it, but it's, you know. Not the best thing in the world. That's really all it is. So there. I didn't read anything that says you can't design a lane as a minor street. You definitely can't design a minor street as a lane, but. It was just a function of I I found it. It it, you know, it threw me off a little bit and I was looking for clarifications as to why they. They went with the minor street. I didn't know if that had come up with the board previously or if it was just a choice by the applicant.
And then, just a clarification on your comment about buildable versus unbuildable. You tell me what the rub is with that too?
Well, so I mean, they they have some lots and and they were addressing it earlier with the. I think it's the definition of lot area in the zoning. Where. The the some percentage of the lot area has to be. A pretty significant proportion of lot area has to be.
Ninety percent.
Yeah, it has to be land that isn't subject to coverage by the Wetlands Protection Acts, other than land subject to flooding. So that includes border, you know, BBW, riverfront. A lot of things that you don't have in Bellingham, like coastal structures, but ponds, lakes, etc., land underwater. And so there are a couple, there are. And I don't remember, that's the part, I I don't remember how many lots. Are not buildable under this definition. You don't meet that threshold.
But you know which ones the lots are?
Would be. Lot three. Lot twelve.
Yeah, so. I agree with the peer reviewer, it seems like these comments are pretty minor in nature, minus the. The Franklin Planning Board one might be a little bit of a hurdle. I'm interested to see where that lands. I know, I assume that really the next hurdle to move forward is really getting a stormwater peer review. It's really the key here. And so Dominic, you said that we should expect to see that tomorrow?
Yeah, so I apologize, I actually just got back from vacation today, so we just finished that. I I renewed it this afternoon. Outside the stormwater part. There's not a lot there, it's it's pretty minor stuff, I think. I don't think there's any any like. You know, oh my god, I can't. This is so horrible type comments with the stormwater.
Perfect. Alright, so I know that's. That that seems to be key. Just one question for you, Ross, with the. That, I think in the first meeting I brought that, the galley recharger system in front. I, did you look into that? Are you waiting for the? Peer review comments to come back or? I don't know, are you thinking about revising that surface basin?
Really, we'd really like to keep it on the ground. I mean, it's gonna be privately maintained by the homeowners association. It's actually not even in Bellingham. So the town would never be responsible, it's actually in Franklin. And it's on a lot, so. It's just, it's it's just to put a pond out there next to the street, all the homes. The dig would be pretty big. We looked at the size of it by the time I swoop it. It it really doesn't do any justice. It's it's not a lot of runoff going out in that direction. And we get to, I think it's the last. Plus or minus two hundred feet of road.
Gotcha.
You know, so it's. And and it is really good soils in that area, so we're gonna get good infiltration. And I put these in, you know, twenty five years, thirty years ago, and it's still working now.
For that. That makes, and the fact that it's in Franklin, I didn't even think of that, so that's a good point. One thing, though, so. The recharge system, if you can jog my memory, does that have an overflow structure? Some type of way for the water to get out, not back up into the catch basins?
No, with that, I can put one. You can put a grate on the manhole before it goes into the unit.
Can that be a fair compromise? So if that does? It's not gonna.
I would actually put it on the chambers. I would put a small grate on one of the over the top of chambers, so it could bubble up on the ground.
I think that would be. That would be. I think a fair compromise. So that would be good. And then, I think once we get the peer review back for stormwater, maybe we can start discussing. We've a request for the fencing around basins and then also the the test pits in the road.
Yeah, one of the reasons why we didn't wanna do the test pit for eight. It's a gravel, they're all gravel, but. You know, it caused quite a bit of disruption going through the site that we didn't think was necessary at this point. We'd be happy to have a condition of private construction of the roadway that. We could.
Yeah, I think that's fair, and even.
Just doesn't seem practical at this point to go out there and disrupt everything.
I agree. Um, is the road. Primarily in cut or fill? Is there sections that are?
So when you come in from a. Prospect at first, after you get over the first couple hundred feet, that's a cut coming in, it's a pretty steep hill going up, and it's a sizable cut. Then as you come down towards the wetland area, that's a sizable fill to get over the wetlands. We're gonna have retaining walls on either side. You know, to reduce the impacts of the weather, but that's a sizable fill. And as you go up in the back, it's it's not as bad.
Gotcha.
It's pretty. Pretty. Even.
One of my points come back to that.
Yeah, I I think maybe a fair compromise even for test pits if. Maybe when you're ready to construct, maybe just test pits in some of the cut areas. To verify groundwater, cause fills.
We did do the testing with the drainage basis.
Gotcha, yep, yeah, and I recall seeing it as all sand and gravel, so that's very good soils.
So I have a question for you.
I have nothing to add right now. Ron brought up the.
So what I was noting on the. Not the detention bases again, but I'm going to. Not only is it not on a single lot. Not only is it not on one lot, but you got them going to two lots. So that's certainly a concern of mine is that they're not on single lots and you can work through that and get the stormwater stuff back in.
Well, they're all on one lot.
About lot nine into lot ten?
Look, you're with the, oh, I guess you, you have a fight comes down the property line.
Yeah, so. Question for Jim, Jim, what's the scale of these things supposed to be? It's not one sixty, is it?
Forty.
We we updated them to.
You have.
These are the updated ones?
Yeah, but we are looking at it as a reduction of the forty.
Well, yeah.
Jim, can you clarify what scale they're supposed to be at?
Yeah, I believe they're forty, but one second, I can pull it up.
Okay, I got one sixty here, so is that?
No, we put, we added sheets at the end of the forty scale for the back of the, for the back of the plant.
Alright.
Commission, the conservation commission.
Yeah, so that's when we start looking at this and the detention basins on one lot, not the other lot, we're kinda used to seeing stuff on certain scales.
Sure, no, we we added that for this last revision, so it's in there.
I'd be happy to provide full size copy, what I was told.
Yeah, we don't need to do full size copies, just. But yeah, that's a concern because, I mean, looking at this, it looks like ten.
I I could see that one, yeah, we can move that one over.
Well, let's let's talk about separate lots might end up being the way it goes anyway, so. Talk about that when we get stormwater done. I think the other concerns have already come up at this point. That's what I got.
I I have a question on that separate lot, hey?
Can you just wait till I get finished something? Address all the questions at once. Again, we've talked about the access to Franklin. I don't read the, you know. Rehash that. We've spoken about the stormwater basins on a separate lots. We spoke briefly about cut and fill. You know what your calculations are? And how much material is to leave the site? And how will it leave the site?
I don't know that answer, I can give you that though.
Cause I assume it's probably gonna leave the site. To Franklin?
It will have to come up in front of you.
Okay, they'll probably be, yeah, again.
Franklin and then out Maple Street.
So I think they they need to be aware of that. We need to have some idea with regards to lighting details for the streets. You've received a letter from conservation.
And I haven't got that letter that you just received.
Well, I think conservation offered a letter concerning impacts in the natural area and wetland crossing. Was that Jim, was that meeting from last night?
Right, no, I believe it was last week, Lou. Just just a recap of your guys' meeting from last week.
Yeah, we've we've got that discussion.
And then looking at alternatives.
We're looking at, the commission would like us to look at an alternative analysis to. Shift the road away from the wetland crossing that's existing there, which. Will provide to them, but it really is. Looping a road that's a thousand feet long to get to the where the cul-de-sac is today. Rather than going over the existing process. So it's just a question of. Fitting that alternative's analysis with the regulations, it has to be. Economically equivalent. To be offset by the already existing. Crossing that's there.
Okay.
Complicated. Formula, I guess. I don't do it.
I'm not, I'm not a math major either, as my fellow board members know. Well, I liked it, I know you have some comments. Does anyone in the public have anything they wanna add? So that we can have the applicant address everything all at once. Jim, is there anything we might have skipped over?
Uh, no, I think you guys really touched on all the high points.
Oh, I'd like to just ask a couple of questions of the board and get their opinion on a few things. One is, in in many towns that we do business with, when we're proposing a crossing, it's lots. Usually, the planning board would waive its. Street width and right of way with as it crosses. The wetlands, because it will minimize impacts. In our particular case, we've designed this roadway, we have sidewalk on all this. You know, to reduce the width of the of the crossing itself, so that it minimizes the impacts. Also reduces the cost to us too as well. But that's one issue that we'd like to get on the table perhaps that the board would consider.
With the input from conservation, of course.
If, you know, they would. I think maybe appreciate the fact that, you know, the boards were cooperating, cause that's how. Historically, we've experienced. The other question that I I wanted to address was the the. The plan in all the remaining lots that are. On the subdivision plan, including all the lots that have frontage on Lake Street. You know, this plan was filed. To grandfather. The property. From the zoning change that the board in the town adopted, I think, last year. Relative to a special permit for townhouses being eligible on this property, so. All of those lots are, we consider the perimeter of the property to be grandfathered. For that special permit. Whether or not we proceed with something along those lines down the road. You know, we're not sure. But I just wanna get those two. Things on the out there.
That's something, Jim, we can address, correct?
Yes, so Lou, just wanna clarify, so you're essentially, you wanna make sure those A and R lots are incorporated into the definitive subdivision?
Every everything shown, the perimeter, everything shown on the plan, the perimeter of the plan is. Right, right, right. You know, and one other thing regarding earth removal. So, do you folks really, you know, know this was a gravel operation at one point and I don't know when it seems to be one? But there's likely going to be excess gravel. Beyond your regulations, I think you have a twenty five hundred cubic yard limit. So would the board prefer us to? Make application for that permit during this process or commence separately for that process?
Jim, that's up, I would leave that up to Kim's decision.
Right, so so typically, the the planning board would condition. That though, that does leave, you know, yourself with a little bit of ambiguity about, you know, next steps. You could certainly do it concurrently. That's that's up to you.
Okay, we we can talk about that, Jim, next week.
So again, it's known in the public. Where's any questions? What we need to do is. We need to extend the date on this. And also look for. A next meeting time. This is what I'm thinking. We meet either on the. Thirteenth or the twenty seventh of October. For a continuation. And have Amy give us. Because of some of the hurdles we we have. An extension deadline. To.
Was that September, Mr. Chairman, or October?
October. But I'm looking at extension deadline. To December first. So make sure we cover ourselves. So again. You have, I think, some work to do. And we're offering an opportunity for. Thirteenth to the twenty seventh of October.
Sure, we'll go, we'll go with that, cause Kong Kong is really kind of like driving the car here. So we need to address their comments, make sure what we're proposing to them.
Correct.
Is going to be something that we can represent to the board that is. Moving forward, but. Is there, is there a way, you know, in terms of dealing, uh, meeting with the Kong Kong at the next meeting? Can we represent to the Kong Kong that the planning board might be willing to? Waive some of its regulations as a potential.
I don't think we're there yet.
You're not there yet.
I think we need some more information.
Okay.
I I alluded to that a little bit earlier. I do think we need some more information. And we'll need some more input from our peer reviewers as well. So you can choose which you want to.
Yeah, so for the next meeting, other than. The, you know, getting Kong Kong right away. We'll address the rest of these comments that the peer reviewer has outlined. Plus, whatever comments he's had regarding the stormwater management. Review that we're hoping you're gonna get either tomorrow or the beginning.
Yeah, and then we need to isolate retention ponds.
Yeah.
Where they're gonna be, and then obviously. The letter from Frank.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay, I understand it. So do you want the thirteenth or the twenty seventh?
It's October, right? What are we meeting to? Let's do the twenty seventh, that way.
That that's fine. And then I'll tell Amy to extend it.
To December first.
December first, that gives enough time. Something happens.
Right.
So. I need a motion for a continuance. To October twenty seven. Have a second. Remotion on the floor. For a continuance of this public meeting. To October twenty seven. Any discussion? A call for a vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Above, a motion passes now. We'll also need a vote. For an extension deadline to December first. Jim, do we?
No, we just, we just need the applicant's acceptance of that and.
Alright, thank you very much.
Very much.
Should we, as an aside comment, should we reach out to the. Review the plan?
Or one thing regarding that, so if you're doing the reduced. Right of way for the crossing, I think.
The final problem has to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Overall, we should not wait for their comment.
Feel free, sir.
Okay.
And let them know, I think they're gonna probably wonder what. Correct me if I'm wrong, they're waiting at the. On the best.
What, the low capacity?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure.
A bridge.
It's, you're doing like a box.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll have.
So feel free, sir.
Great, thanks very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good to see everybody.
Have a nice night, enjoy it again tonight.
Mr. Chairman, everybody, I will check out as well, thank you.
Thank you, Dominic.
Thank you, Dominic, thank you very much.
Yep, talk to you soon.
Next sound tonight is a new public hearing. For. for um, four fifty five Hartford Avenue. If you please um, read the hearing notice.
Absolutely.
Your first action, something you wrote on.
Congratulations. So four fifty five Hartford Avenue. The applicant and owner, Moshe Atias, Darn Properties LLC seeks a section two forty dash sixteen development plan approval as section two forty dash fifty four stormwater management from section proposed to construct a fifteen thousand, two hundred square foot, nine bay auto repair shop with associated improvements at four fifty five Hartford Ave. In Bellingham, approximately four point four plus or minus acres of land shown on an assessor's map. Zero four dash seventy two, zone business one in suburban. The plans uh, were prepared by Allen Engineering and Associates, Inc., one Charlesview Road, Suite Two, Oakdale, Mass.
Thank you. So I'd like to entertain a motion to open a public hearing. Travis second.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Call for the vote, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. That motion passes in members.
Good evening.
Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
If you could step forward and give us an overview.
Absolutely.
Be doing that.
I'll be doing the presentation. Yes, Mark Allen, Allen Engineering and Associates.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you as well. Physically here, geez.
Been a while.
Two years.
Years.
Yeah, pre-COVID. Yeah, there was some.
Oh, you're only here for one item tonight, though, right?
Correct, just one. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mark Allen, again with Allen Engineering Associates. Here representing Moshe Atias uh, and Ruben, his son, uh, with Darn Properties LLC. This application is before you, as indicated by the public hearing notice, for two items, one of which is the development plan approval. The other is the stormwater management permit. This should look familiar to you folks as it was previously uh, withdrawn without prejudice about six to nine months ago. Um, similarly, um, in automotive repair uh, facility with nine bays. Uh, we have brought this project back before this board and before the uh, Conservation Commission uh, in in similar fashion to the to the way it was previously uh, designed. Uh, all of the butters have been notified via certified mail. I do have the green cards with me tonight. I spoke with Amy earlier today. I just said I'd bring them with me tonight. So before I leave, I'll just drop them with you folks. Uh, so I I do have those.
Assistant to your assistant.
Dennis gets those, he says?
Yes.
Uh huh. Um, so um, as far as a presentation goes, I I will keep it fairly brief. I don't want to bore you with uh, the the overall site development layout. It's very similar to the last one you saw. Uh, so as indicated in the public hearing notice, it is at four fifty five Hartford Ave. It's a four and a half acre site, uh, just before the Medway Town Line, you know, but uh, the um, uh, the the ice cream shop and the and the gas station on Hartford Ave on the southeastern side of the of the property. Um, I'll kind of go through the uh, plan set as as submitted, just to kind of bring you up to speed. I don't know if this is. This project previously had some conservation uh, filings on it. Uh, some of the property has been reserved as de-restricted to to as a no-touch area. There are significant wetlands that surround the property. Uh, those wetlands have been confirmed previously applications, and as well as last night, uh, we met with the Conservation Commission who indicated that they are very familiar with the property and still agree with the wetland delineation. So none of the other, none of the physical wetland items have changed as far as uh, development restraints. The property will support uh, the nine unit automotive repair building here in this L-shaped location. That has not changed since the previous application. What has changed is um, fairly not insignificant, but we've adjusted the parking and access, and we've adjusted the drainage system. Those are the two biggest changes that you'll see tonight. Um, and again, through peer review, I'm sure we get some comments back from that. So they were a series of two or three iterations at the previous application.
Yep.
What we did was we kind of scoured all of the 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 comments and responses. We tried to be a little bit proactive and just kind of see what the questions were. So hopefully this plan set addresses those comments and responses. A lot of them had to do with stormwater. From the last hearing, fencing, uh, depth to groundwater, um, freeboard, all that good stuff. So we we feel confident in the fact that this plan set is sort of um, adding to or revision revising the previous uh, submission uh, with a little bit more um, attention to those items that were still outstanding at the last time. Um, one of the particular items was the the infiltration basins and their uh, size and location. So this particular develop, this this iteration uh, footprint got a slightly bit larger. And the reason being is to to accommodate the drainage, the stormwater. And um, some of the items that we addressed were uh, providing that foot of freeboard above the hundred year storm elevation. I don't know how you do with a one foot detention basin, but um, you know, we sort of worked through those items. Uh, we went to Conservation last night. They indicated that the peer review agent uh, may be changing, but with the the previous hearing, I'm not sure what this board is doing. They indicated last night that they may be moving away from the BSC group, so I don't, I don't want to get a feel for you folks.
We don't have been, we don't know yet.
Okay.
Decision is not to make.
Okay, so in talking with Amy Sutherland over the last couple of weeks, we've held off sending our applicant to anybody until we've talked over the Conservation, you folks.
Mm hmm.
Um, so uh, we'll be looking a little bit for your direction as far as, as far as where to go from here. Um, some of the other items that were uh, intended to were uh, the the physical uh, sort of plumbing HVAC items in the building. Uh, before there were uh, multiple different bathroom locations. We're gonna have a common area uh, in the in the sort of the elbow of the L-shaped building. The septic system is going to be in a slightly different location. The access in and out has better uh, turning radii and site distance. Distances, the trash uh, location has been uh, changed a little bit. Snow storage has been changed a little bit, uh, and the parking has changed a little bit, but nothing crazy different from the last iteration, just sort of picking up and and kind of dotting the i's, crossing the t's.
Yes.
So any questions you guys may have? I know there's gonna be a lot more peer review.
There will be.
Yeah.
One thing I would, I would like to ask if you've done, and you alluded to it, we had a few meetings before when we had the public present.
Yes.
And some issues were raised. Have you ended up going to go back through those notes?
Only through the peer review notes, not public hearing notes, but peer review notes.
Okay. Um, you may want to go online, touch base with Amy.
Sure.
Or the applicant.
Sure.
Find out when you were here.
Mm hmm.
Get those uh, minutes.
Mm hmm.
So we can address the concerns that we raised, and I think one or two of those meetings.
Sure.
Jim may have them up, the dates up the top of my head.
Yep.
It's been a while.
Yep.
But I I don't want to reinvent the wheel.
Absolutely.
So we can address those concerns.
Yep.
Prior to our next meeting.
Yep.
Remembering what the public has said. Maybe very often.
Absolutely. And that's what we're trying to do as far as the peer review side was. I didn't recall that the there was much from the public, but I absolutely touched base with Jim and Amy and see what those concerns were.
Dennis, any questions?
I have a couple of questions and comments. Um, so first of all, I took a quick look at everything and you know, it looks like the the stormwater design, and it's definitely, it looks really good.
Mm hmm.
So I imagine the peer review will come back pretty uh, minimal. So, nice job.
Hey.
Um, um, my concerns or comments are more in line with um, the vehicular access around the site.
Mm hmm.
I know that it looks like this is going to be an automobile repair service building, so I'm assuming that there's going to be tow trucks accessing the site, flatbeds potentially, depending on the tenants.
Yes.
Are not kicked at this point, I imagine.
Correct, yeah, very reasonable.
Yeah, um, so I would just ask that maybe you can do some truck turn figures.
Sure.
Um, to show that, you know, there's access around. I know it looks like you have twenty eight feet of access in front of um, one of the garage lengths and then thirty the other, which I, that should be plenty for, you know, passenger vehicle. I just don't know if, you know, if there's anything bigger than a passenger vehicle going in.
We could do an auto turn.
Sure.
Iteration, absolutely.
And then also for like an SU thirty truck.
Right.
Access to the dumpster and then probably need a pump truck to the holding tanks before drains are.
Yep.
Um, and then the other thing too regarding the access to the back of the building.
Mm hmm.
It might be good to show some type of building protection, whether it be bollards. I see that you have the striped aisle for I'm guessing pedestrians. Maybe you could raise that to make it a curb just to give some pedestrian refuge.
In here, in here.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, and then um, and then one question, which might be for the applicant. Are you planning on storing any vehicles here outside, whether it be fleet vehicles or vehicles that are going to be repaired or anything?
And again, I'll I'll defer to Moshe, but nobody has a a a lease yet. Uh, so we're a little unsure as to the the end users for the nine units.
Gotcha.
For what we foresee in the in the in the marketing that's been done, it's more day trips.
Yep.
And not overnight storage of vehicles.
Gotcha. I think the reason why I'm bringing it up is because I know if you have outdoor fleet storage and if you have uh, you know, vehicles that are, might be disrepair, might be triggering the land use high potential load trigger.
That was last night's comment.
Oh, was it? Concom beeped to it.
They beeped to it. Um, so we're gonna evaluate that, and if that's the case, we can run that particular model with the with the one inch runoff and the and the different particular uh.
Yeah, and I think for the most part, what you have proposed is, you know, you have like the water quality units that are gonna have some type of oil and grit storage. Um, the only issue that I could potentially see is where you have the runoff right at the entrance of the four bay and grass channel.
Yep.
To have some type of way of collecting any type of containment.
Sure, sure.
Would that be above ground?
Yes.
Well, if it's like a water quality.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Gonna be underground.
Yeah, the four bay as designed now is above ground, and then a grass well, and it it's a large uh, above ground if you will, open basins.
Yep.
Yep.
So.
So interesting you brought that up. That was a discussion last night. And the way we uh, purposely designed it was that this four bay uh, collects water that is sort of out of the general realm of the parking area.
Gotcha.
Uh, and we also designed this uh, snow storage in an air areas that could also melt uh, in this four bay and grass swell so that uh, the stormwater cleaning system occurs before the infiltration. Uh, so that was take, definitely taken care of, and I think, and I know that the Bellingham stormwater regulations are sort of more stringent than the one inch runoff. Uh, so I'm I'm very confident that when we when we run the level uh, one inch in in the stormwater mitigation, we'll be easily to capture that.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Perfect. And then just one other quick comment. Um, I think you had a note in your infiltration basin just regarding removing top soils and I guess the B layer because you want to get to the sand.
Correct.
The infiltration backfill with gravel.
Correct.
Sand or light material.
Yes.
Can you add that note for your recharger as well? Because it doesn't look like on your detail.
Okay. Um, oh, for the recharge, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the underground recharge.
Yes.
System.
Absolutely.
So, you know.
Consistent.
Yeah, so when it goes out to bid to the contractor.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And that was one of the other changes. We we really wanted to maximize the uh, underground storage of of SMAR, so we we sort of increased from the previous application a series of uh, underground full tech chambers along the rear uh, so so as to try to minimize the above ground.
Gotcha. Perfect.
Hmm.
That's all I had. I'll stop talking now.
No, no, it's fine. Nick?
I have nothing to add.
Um, no, but um, as far as the tenants are concerned, um, it's it was described before as um, automotive type of things that's still what we're at.
Absolutely, yes.
So what type of, what type of businesses we've had?
Uh, automotive repair, uh, general automotive repair, uh, audio installation, anything to do with automotives. Uh, detailing, um, anything automotive related. Again, we don't have anything leased at the moment, uh.
No, I I foresee stereo installation.
Tires up.
Tires. Some of the smaller, some of the smaller folks that may be looking for space, um, you know, sometimes they're leasing space somewhere else. They need a bigger space, so it just gives options for nine new tenants to to operate independently. As opposed to having to own, you know, or buy a parcel of land and sort of do a tire shop on their own parcel. This offers sort of that leasing option to say, you know, it's a tenant, it's a tenant as opposed to a brick and mortar, if you will.
Kind of interesting to see, um, the office space, no office type stuff. I don't, didn't see any offices on here. Or in the building?
Yeah, so.
Or is there?
No, I'm sorry. Uh, inside each of the nine spaces would be a very small office.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah. And then there'll be a common area in the in the elbow that'll have the uh, the utilities, the bathrooms.
So all of this, like, snow recovery is going from the front, it's gonna go all the way around to the back?
No, 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 all on the side here.
The side too.
Yeah. So this snow recovery will come on the side, the rear will go in the back.
All right, thank you.
Okay, a couple of questions. Last time, you posed something very similar. Nine different type of vendors, non-competing with each one another. In essence, operating the bottom line. Like you could have a detailer, someone does tires, someone does upholstery, so in essence, they're not competing with one another. Last time we spoke, we wanted to limit all the work to inside.
Mm hmm.
We don't want um, I particularly a group of kids renting a spot for a couple of weeks, working on their car. And then, you know, then leaving and doing the work outside.
Hmm.
Any idea how long the leases would be with each respective tenant?
Sure, so I I wasn't privy to the last application, as you know. So uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on Moshe to to see to answer that question as far as who might be leasing and what the terms are. I can't imagine there'd be such a short-term lease for a couple of weeks, but.
Well, in my experience, uh, my relationship with the town of Milford is that they are able very well to keep the place organized, clean and orderly, and the reason why is because it's all within in the lease. When you have a very good list that addresses all the concerns that may come up. Uh, and that's what I'm working on right now to address your question. Any work is outside? Absolutely not. No cars without wheels, no unregistered cars. No metal debris to last longer than a week outside. Those are the things that I work in the lease, and I have experience with automotive because I used to be an operator. An organic myself. So it's really all comes down to how the list is written, and that's why I'm always able to uh, get the tenant to do what needs to be done.
Okay. Um, screening for the dumpsters, what do you propose there?
Uh, uh, solid vinyl fence all around.
Okay. And then we just have a lot of fence for the back for the neighbors.
Uh, come again?
Jim, didn't we have a um, another fence in the back for the neighbors?
Right, so yeah, last go around, and I think that's maybe something where, as you had mentioned uh, to the applicant, looking at past practice. Um, and maybe I, I'm happy to sit down with Mr. Allen and then chat about that. I mean, they do have a guardrail in the back, but I think that the last time around, we were open for something more to capture uh, potential debris uh, that may get back there as it's a sensitive area with isolated wetlands. Um, and then and the neighbors further back, uh, we didn't want trash and debris flying back there, so the the thought was fencing there, as well as fencing. Um, now this this building has shifted closer to uh, closer to Pearl Street uh, and the neighbor uh, in between there. Uh, but there was originally a fence along on top of where it states the six foot uh, rep rap side slope um, in order to give greater privacy.
I'm more than happy to revisit that.
Okay, so as we go through this.
Yes.
I suspect we're gonna get more input from the public.
Absolutely.
And I know that you have the. And I know that the public is significant important last time.
Gotcha.
So I think, you know, we want to.
Capture all those items.
Capture everything we can.
Sure.
And you're just trying to make this process as smooth as possible. And then I know he mentioned earlier, just reference the leases. We got some parameters.
Um. In the general.
Cause you, cause you're putting this in the neighborhood.
Right.
Although it's in Hartford Avenue.
Right.
You know, you're putting a neighborhood and we want something that, you know.
Would be product.
Fixing and the neighbors feel comfortable.
Absolutely.
So, you know, that's.
Completely understand. Completely understand.
I think it's fairly, um, simple on the panel.
Absolutely.
Jim, anything else?
No, not at that time of the, well, obviously there will, you can leave time for the public comment, but we certainly can start initiating the peer review and have that prepared for.
Do you need anyone in the public right now?
Yeah, right here.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm actually here in another matter, but I live on Pearl Street.
Okay.
And I do remember this, um, proposal quite well.
Yep.
I was a member of Zoom meetings for each of the meetings.
I'm glad you participated.
Um, again, I, my memory also says that this was withdrawn five while ago.
Yes.
I think there were some very big objections to the potential hazardous material coming out of these days. How it was going to be addressed with storage tanks. And I do have some, more than some experience with these things in the, in the cursory work that I saw. It seemed extremely inadequate for nine days of automotive type servicing. Then as of this meeting, we still don't know what those are.
Correct.
Behind oil stations or nowhere. It could be hydraulic fluids or transmissions, all of those things combined.
Correct.
And if the board would bear with it, cause I'm working only from memory. I believe that at one time, the, um, peer review also mentioned snow removal.
Yes.
They did not have the ability to insist upon it, but strongly encouraged that because of the lot in the drainage, that the snow should be removed from the lot after each storm. Um, again, working from memory, I don't have certainly any chance to review.
Yep.
Any of the new documents. We also had some real kind of confluences with the, uh, floor elevation.
Yes.
Didn't seem to work for a continuous slab. There were huge drops and so on and so forth. So again, just sitting here on another matter, I would hope that we can more fully look at.
That's why we want him to go back. I think that that's part of their due diligence to go back, look at everything that was discussed in the previous meetings, make notes, and now we'll plan to make sure those were addressed. He's the applicant that. I dropped, that's his job. That's, I'm sorry. It's, it's your responsibility.
Absolutely.
Well, as a neighbor, I do thank the board for injecting that.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's going to be addressed.
They did suggest look at the neighbors because the neighbors are not real pleased about this for.
I understand. I remember that.
For a, for a number of reasons. A little of it was the fence. Those are my neighbors.
Yep.
You know, dumpsters being emptied at two o'clock in the morning and.
Yep.
Automobile parts in the back out of you, all of those things. So I do appreciate very, very much you asking the applicant to go back and review what the neighbors' impressions were of the project and potential.
As well as the board. Yes.
And, and I do appreciate that.
Yeah.
As a neighbor and as a taxpayer.
You know, did you get the best stuff for? I don't think it was appropriate for us to come out with a list of items and say, you know, address these, that, you know, that's their responsibility to, it's the same applicant to address items that were raised in the past. So, yeah, we are going to look at that.
And it, again, it is appreciated for buying it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else in the public?
Mr. Chairman, I do see a few people in the public online and I, I think Isabel may have just unmuted.
Yeah.
Isabel?
Okay, that's my wife's computer.
Okay, sir.
This is John Tedeschi from fifteen Pearl Street.
Yes, sir.
And I know the last time this proposal came up, we had a big concern. We're only two houses down from Cumberland Farm.
I remember you.
And as a result, um, as of right now, it's very difficult to get out of Pearl Street onto Hafed Ave. I mean, the traffic is horrible. And I'm just wondering if any traffic study has been done since the last proposal. We now have the, uh, condo units around the corner in Midway that's adding to the traffic. We sit there sometimes five to 10 minutes trying to get out of Pearl Street. What impact is, is another business going to have on, on traffic flow?
Well, we will, Jim, I think it's applicable to request a traffic study.
Because the board could certainly request a, a traffic analysis, uh, which isn't quite to the level of a traffic study.
Yeah.
But we can certainly start with that and see what, uh, what that entails and, and go from there.
Yeah. So just to let you know, we didn't forget about everything you said. It was withdrawn and then that's where it was left. So everything is being resurrected. But thank you for coming. What's your other concern?
That, that was the biggest concern. I mean, obviously none of the neighbors want another commercial business in that area. I mean, that's a, that's a tough area between residential and commercial. Um, you know, I guess to a certain point, you know, residents can express their concerns, but, um, I don't know how far that goes.
Well, you certainly listen, sir.
Yeah, but I think the biggest concern is, is the traffic now. I mean, it, it's absolutely horrible now with Cumberland Farms, uh, with, with Home Depot, Market Basket up the street. Sometimes it's almost impossible to get out of Pearl Street.
Okay.
Yeah. And just wondering what, what this, what kind of impact this is going to have.
We will try to determine that as best we can.
Okay, thank you.
I see a nod from the applicant.
Absolutely.
Anyone else out there?
I don't see anybody else unmuting at this time. Mr. Jim.
Thank you. So I'd like to do is, uh, look at, um, perhaps, uh, continuation to, um, I'm seeing October thirteenth, but, um, Jim, can we do both this and prospect on the twenty seventh?
Uh, we cer- we certainly could.
In case something comes up. So I'd like to, uh, would you be willing, uh, to a continuation to, uh, October, um, twenty seventh?
Absolutely. Yeah. So we continue the concon to the same week. So that would.
That's perfect.
Yeah. My only question is, and I don't know where the boards stand, will that, that give the peer review or whoever is selected enough time to get information to improve?
Jim, I think we can work with that.
Yeah, well, we'll do everything we can to get that, that done in the time we're not.
That's why I want to move from the thirteenth to the twenty.
Sure. Yeah.
Case we're tight there.
Yeah.
And then that gives us almost two months.
Right.
Almost two months. Two months. So I think that's fine.
Absolutely.
So I need a motion for continuance.
To, uh, October twenty.
October twenty seventh. Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jim?
Aye.
You can, you can vote.
Yeah.
That passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sure. Thank you very much.
You're very much.
Look forward to seeing you soon. All right. Now I'm assuming, sir. You were here.
I am.
On number ten Pearl Street, A and R rep.
Yeah, myself, Amy Blaser.
Okay.
And along with our engineer, a wrecking.
Okay. Jim, can you bring us up to speed on this?
Yes, absolutely. So an A and R is before you on Pearl Street. Um, this, this actually has been, um, worked through the town by Ms. Cavalier for a little while now. They have sought relief from the zoning board of appeals for a certain, uh, requirements of lot, uh, lot shape and I believe lot area. Sorry. Uh, I don't have that on in front of me there. Um, uh, nevertheless, the, the lot is serviced by a public, a paved public way. Uh, so adequate access is confirmed. Uh, they do have relief for the, uh, the, the lot and, um, and, you know, I would recommend, uh, signing of this, uh, plan.
What was yours?
Jim explained it very well. Thank you. Um, so yes, on behalf of the domesticos, we're here to get an A and R plan approved, uh, to divide ten Pearl Street into a, uh, two lots. One is conforming, the other one is non-conforming, uh, with, uh, we asked for relief from zoning board and received a decision on June second, uh, for that relief, which is for reduced frontage and shape factor.
Okay. Dennis, you have a question?
Brian? I'm good.
I'm fine.
Um, I'm fine.
Okay, entertain a motion. Approve the signing of the A and R?
Thank you.
All in favor of signing the A and R?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All I could do is just pass this on that table and, um, I was just signing.
I'd like to thank the board for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir.
And to reiterate what I said for the comments directed towards the automobile potential lease. That's very important as a voter, as a taxpayer, that the board is, in my opinion, certainly looking out for the interest of the town in general. And I find that to be a commitment.
I'm sure. Please come to future meetings.
Okay.
Hope to see you on the twenty seventh.
Good night.
Thank you very much. Best of luck with your lots.
Thank you.
Is this one?
Good night. Good night.
Ladies and gentlemen.
I have a pen in my hand. Next up is the, uh, Jim? Dennis? Now set. Let's sign our agenda is warrant article discussion. Uh, we are looking at, um, two possible warrant articles, uh, from the, uh, planning board for future town meetings. And I would join the table over the row. All right. So the two items in front of you. Well, I guess just for background, as everyone knows, with the different proposals that have been in front of us in the last year and a half that I've been here, I know we've had quite a few concerns from the public regarding just some, uh, we'd say zoning bylaws, controls and such to just implement design criteria that we're approving. Um, with that, looking at our zoning bylaws, you know, there's a few items that it looks like we're lacking. Um, and there were two things in particular that I wanted to look at. Not necessarily because anything's coming in front of us, but just to be proactive in case there is a future project. Um, the first one is drive-through facilities. Typically, um, you know, in my experience, most towns in the zoning bylaws, they have specific regulations, um, regarding drive-through facilities, whether it's for fast food banks, car washes, what have you. Um, and I took a look at our zoning bylaws. It doesn't look like we have anything. And Jim, I don't know if you can, uh, you can probably confirm that unless I miss something, but.
No, you're, you're correct. There's nothing, uh, as specific as what you're, what you have proposed here. I think it's great. And, uh, I believe we do technically, uh, require a special permit by the select board, uh, for drive-through. Um, uh, but that's a separate aspect. That's not zoning. Uh, so I, I think what you have proposed here looks, looks great.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and just a quick overview of what this is. This is kind of the bare minimum that I've seen in most communities, um, which is a minimum width requirement, minimum stacking requirement with specifics on the stacking spaces where the engineer is calculating. Um, the stacking that they're proposing. And then item C, that landscape buffer, that was something that I actually saw in the town of Rotten, Connecticut for a project that we worked on where it was probably one of the most specific landscape buffer requirements I've ever seen. Usually they just stay ten foot, twenty foot buffer. This gives both the applicant some options as well as the planning board to kind of steer the applicant in the right direction as far as, um, you know, if they can keep the natural vegetation buffer, great. If not, you know, what are your options? Can you scale back items and such? Um, cause right now I think, you know, technically if somebody wants to propose a, a drive-through, I mean, they can put that five feet off of a residential driveway if they wanted to right off the.
Correct.
It's.
I already exist.
Yeah. So, um, this way it just gives us some controls to implement in case something comes up. So that's, that's the reasoning behind this, the section two forty dash sixty-five drive-through facilities, which I think that's the best place to, to put it in the zoning bylaws, but I'm not too sure. I will, I will leave that to the experts, AKA Jim. So, um, and then the one other thing. Actually, I don't, do you want to go separately? I don't know if there's any discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to raise one, one point.
All right.
And I, I, they still want, what I question is, people may know where I tend to go for fast. Um, I now see that's a particular chain. Having one lane winding into two service areas.
Yeah, the, um, tandem drive-through lanes are becoming more common with specific chains.
Yep.
But if, in my experience with franchises that do the tandem drive-through lanes, they have specific corporate requirements for that. For example, uh, like McDonald's.
Mm-hmm.
They have.
That's on.
Yeah, but they have specific in-house requirements that they design their drive-throughs for, which, and it goes all the way down to the color and with pavement markings. I mean, they are very strict. And if you think that you're going to get away from the design criteria, you are sadly mistaken. Corporate makes sure that that does not happen. Uh, that's my experience. I don't know. I mean, we can add stuff in here about tandem, um, drive-through lanes. Um, the, basically though, the biggest thing with the tandem lanes. Basically, though, the biggest thing with the tandem lanes is that. With this, they're still going to be required to do a bypass. Which.
And I don't think they do the same.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I know that there are drive throughs in town that do not have a bypass. And it's not pleasant.
Correct.
I don't know if anybody's been to Dunkin Donuts, South Valentine, right next to Stop and Shop. 10 feet between the building and a big retaining wall.
Yeah, and the guy's almost sitting on top of his falling all air drops.
Exactly. Yeah. So like, that's a prime example of, you know, if somebody came in and said, I want to do that. Well, now they can't.
So again, we're being proactive. Yep. Jim, I'm kind of wondering out loud, and it's dangerous at times. I know existing operations would be grandfathered. When could this impact? Existing operations? Is there a trigger for a certain type of permit? That would require there's a rebuild?
Are you asking me or?
I'm asking.
No, no. So for this type of zoning change. You know, this is specific to drive through standards. So I mean, if let's say a Dunkin Donuts doesn't have a drive through. And they want to add a drive through, then it would trigger. So an existing Dunkin's that wants added drive through, and we already have these standards adopted. Then that would trigger it, but. You know, the, the.
On the same time, McDonald's turns their human down to do a rebuild.
Right. So they wanted, they want to change up their drive through, existing drive through essentially? Okay, so. I mean, I think that's going to ultimately be the, the sense of the board as to the level of disruption. Likely they would be grandfathered. But again, I mean, if if it's, we're going to completely redo our. I can't see envision a scenario where that where it would occur that we'd need to trigger it for an existing drive through. I mean, I'm thinking of like the Northern. McDonald's when they made adjustments to their drive through where the where the market basket is. It wasn't, it wasn't dramatic change. It was more of, you know, slight movement of signage and and a rebranding essentially. So. Yeah, ultimately, it would, it would be up to the the building commissioner and the board, but. For the most part, if, as long as they already have one, it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact. And yeah.
Okay, you want to move on then?
Yeah, can I?
No, you can.
So I'm, I'm glad that we're being proactive. Surprised we didn't have something like this. Again, as someone who's been frustrated by track service much of my life, I'm glad we're thinking through this. And the one that drives me nuts every day is the Starbucks drive through, right through right across from Stop and Shop.
And last week, we street from Bellamy and going and we can't throw.
That's true. But the, one of the issues that makes that such a horrible. Drive through is that the entrance to the drive through is next to the entrance of the lot. So people literally wait in the road. In line to get, or they stick out in the road. And people can't get in, get out. So the one thing, if we're going to think about this, protect this a little bit. Is perhaps consider putting some requirement that the exit or the entrance to the drive through is not. Near the entrance to the property. So. If you want to see that in operations, just go there.
But if you look at McDonald's. The entrance to the property. In the drive. Although the the end of physical lot. Are right there. That's how they're able to get a queueing system.
Cause your entrance. You can't have, just look, if you go to that Starbucks tomorrow, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about.
I've been there.
You can't have.
Yeah.
Or the Dunkin Donuts right down the street in Franklin, same thing. If they they start there, we'll be clever and go around. And they make this big arc, but the line queues back and the people get stuck. Something to think about.
You see that at a Honeydew at a Pulaski? The road in between Honeydew and Irving, cars are often dumping into that, I forget which street that is.
Yeah.
But there's cars that are blocking traffic on like a Saturday morning.
The, so what you're referring to, Brian, with the separation between drive through entrance and entrance. Cut usually, like I know I ran into a regulation with. There are some verbiages, actually from East Providence, Rhode Island, they have something. Like that. I don't know what the exact verbiage is, but it's something we can look at. I would say, so typically, the minimum stacking requirements are usually. I've seen usually it's 10 spaces for. Minimum stacking for a fast food use. I added a couple because if you think about it, two additional spaces, that's for the additional feet. Drive through. Yeah, because your 10 feet by 20 feet is what we have is the minimum required stacking space. So. That, you know, 12 spaces is significant for a length of drive through. That's a significant amount of queueing. I don't know what that Starbucks has. Another terrible, terrible Starbucks drive through is the one in Bedway. I don't know if you've seen that. That one was retro.
It was just only the town.
After the fact. I don't care. No, I agree with that.
We're trying to work on the front, front one.
I'm already backlisted in both towns.
Okay.
I'm just kidding. So. It's particularly after COVID, it seems like everyone now. Won't get out of their cars, going. Everything needs to be delivered to people.
Less contact with people.
Yeah, if if you build it, they'll, they will come.
Oh, right.
It doesn't matter if you have a 16 queue line, they'll fill it up because.
Yeah.
So people are. In are inclined to use drive through form for it. Just don't want to see the same problems repeated. In Bellamy.
So that's why we're trying.
So look, yeah, and all I'm saying, let's look into it. If you want to get really nitpicky, one thing we could also do for fast food uses is. You can put minimum stacking spaces. We have 12 spaces, no more or less, but you do from the order board. Because that's another corporate standard where Dunkin Donuts typically requires menu board. It used to be on the third car. I think now it's on the fourth. So you have four cars. Then stack it to the drive through. As you just, you said, and I'll, I'll move on, go back to the Starbucks, this unnamed location. Yeah, we're not allowed to use town names unless it's spelling. Two, I remember that two triage lines are getting too long. They actually have people go out further down and take the order further.
Chick-fil-A's. Yeah, they're excellent too.
We, we could keep a tow truck on site. If they go on them, just drag them right back somewhere else.
Or you can just accept this as it's written. On, just a thought. Just kidding. It puts.
What I'd like to do is I'd like to really. Have support from the board to move this forward.
Yeah, so with that being said, as far as next steps, I know we're still discussing the language. Jim, can you help me out? So basically, what would have to happen? We would have to vote on proof. Once we have language approved, and then I imagine. The best course of action would be to present this to the relevant boards, maybe select board, zoning board.
Right. So so next steps, if the board, you know, this is, this is rather informal at the moment. So if the board. You know, is interested in moving this forward. I think Rob, you know, I and Amy can take it to kind of the applicable departments who may have any kind of say in a fire. Town administrator and others and get their insight on it. Give, give it to town council, take the cursor review at it. And then once we have a draft that. We're comfortable with, you're comfortable with, we can bring it back to the planning board. Or a more formal motion to. To recommend this at at the planning board, taking the lead to recommend this to go on the warrant. We would then place it on the warrant that makes it formalized with the planning board as the lead. It would then go through 48, I believe nine, where. It goes to the, so the town and warrant, the select board holds a meeting. It goes then to the planning board for a formal public hearing. That's our typical, even though we we are, you as the planning board are taking the lead on this, you still have to. Then come back for a public hearing where you have to provide a recommendation. On the the very bylaw that you're you're moving forward, but it gives an opportunity for the public to be heard. And then you provide that recommendation that then goes on the the warrant, just like every other zoning change that it would be brought to you by the planning board. And whether it's recommended or not by the planning board.
Okay, we'll go to a town meeting?
So ultimately, it would go to a town meeting. It might be a little late for this one. I would, you know, I would think, so not to rush, maybe the spring town meeting. And in the meantime, you know, I'm happy to start bouncing it around the different departments and town council to get early input.
I'd rather get it in front of the town boards sooner rather than later, obviously, the last minute, even if it's for the spring town.
Before we introduce us to the next one, wanted to give a little preamble to this one. We've all seen in the past. Two years. The importance of the aquaphone in this town. And Rob and I and a couple of members have talked about the importance of protecting our. And we've heard people on Depot Street talk about Maple Street throughout this town. And how important it is. I also think we realize the importance of the aquaphone right now going through the drought that we're experiencing. So with that in mind, Rob, you drafted something for stormwater back?
I did, which actually before I even bring it up, one other question to Jim. When I was looking at the bylaws as well as subdivision rules and regs. It seemed like what I'm about to bring up fits more in the performance standards in the subdivision rules and regs. Which are referenced in the zoning bylaw. So when it comes to changing the subdivision rules and rights, is that same process as amending the zoning bylaws?
That's a very astute observation. So this is something that I've actually had. Put out to multiple town councils that the Bellamy has had. So at some point. When we adopted our stormwater rules and regulations, yes, we tucked them in various locations. We tucked them in our, not only. Our subdivision, right? But we did our planning board rules and regulations. There's some, there's some requirements for stormwater. There as well. And so. To amend the subdivision regulations, which is where our subdivision, our stormwater regulations are held. That's actually just a public hearing from the planning board. The rules and regulations are a public hearing from the board. Zoning or zoning bylaws, general bylaws, that's town meeting vote. So subdivision regulations can certainly be. Amended through a public hearing of the board. However. One kind of lingering question is the fact that our zoning bylaw states that you must adhere to our our stormwater regulations that are found in our subdivision regulations. So I mean, I can, as of right now, my understanding from past town council is. Yes, it's just a public hearing from subdivision for the subdivision rules and regulations. If you'd like me to further. Discuss that. And and confirm first, I'm certainly happy to talk to Amy Questle about that.
Can we work, can we work on another assumption?
Well, Jim, so. I get, the reason why I'm asking, it's not necessarily to make sure this doesn't get, you know. On town meeting, because that's not the case. I'm just, I didn't know if it was the same criteria. If you think that this would fit better somewhere in the zoning bylaws. And we want to just go the same route as the drive through. You, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
I want it to be as transparent as possible. I think that this is a really good move on the town's part, so.
Yeah, I mean, I I've always thought that our subdivision, or excuse me, our stormwater design standards. That aren't applicable to subdivisions. So all of our developments are the ones we, the one we heard tonight and all of our private entities. You know, we we refer them to subdivision control law, which doesn't necessarily make the the most sense. I would, I would ultimately love to get our stormwater into our zoning bylaws, but it is a big, it's a big task. And ultimately, you you run the risk of it not passing a town meeting, the, you know, the rules and standards that we already have in place. So that's, I guess that's more of a, kind of a, quite a bigger question that we should maybe think about, and maybe it's a political question perhaps. I don't know.
Alright, well, I guess so. Why don't we just go over what this is? So this is regarding underground infiltration chambers. I think. I think almost every single proposal that we've had in front of us, that I've been the associate member. I think just about every project has proposed the underground infiltration chambers. And in particular, there's a few sites that I recall as of recently, matter of fact, one of them was tonight, was. Using the underground infiltration chambers for. Impervious paved runoff. Now. The Mass DEP Stormwater Handbook is not. Really specify black and white. You can use underground infiltration chambers for this, but not for this. They say we recommend these. Especially for land use high potential load sites. But it doesn't say you can't use underground infiltration chambers for this use. Common engineering practice is you use those chambers primarily for roof runoff. You can use it for paved areas. Like I've seen it for residential sites where they're trying to keep there. If there's like a lock coverage requirement, I don't think we have that here, but. They'll use, you know, driveway runoff to go to these because they don't want to have a basin in their yard because it's a residential house. But what this does is it pretty much states for new developments. You can use the underground infiltration chambers for roof runoff because it's clean. You cannot use it for paved, impervious surfaces. And the reason being is because the underground infiltration chambers are difficult to maintain. Cause they're underground, can't really, you can jet it out, but once they fail, they fail, you got to replace them. And. It is. And the thing is, is that you're not, nine times out of 10, you're not going to replace them. They're just going to fail and you're going to have flooding and nobody's going. If there's an overflow structure, it's just going to leak out of there even in small storms. So you're not getting the infiltration you need. You're not getting treatment. The biggest thing too with. You know, paved areas is that, you know, you can have grease and oil get into these and they don't get maintained like this. You know, basin, we can actually see what's going in there and you can repair it as needed and maintain it. With these, it's just not the case. I know I brought it up like. I think both warehouses.
Absolutely.
Both warehouse projects from Depot Street and Mechanic Street both. Used underground infiltration chambers for their parking areas. And one of them had a water quality unit, which is good, that has some, you know, form of treatment, but the other one used those isolator ropes, which. Manufacturer specifications say that that's pre-treatment and the stormwater handbook doesn't really specify, so. We don't really have any grounds. I know I questioned it, but. That's.
We couldn't.
No, we don't have any teeth really.
I think this is long.
I have a question for you. What's the number one cause of failure?
Usually it's silt going into those, so.
For parking lot runoff?
Yeah, because you'll have sand, you'll have silt.
So.
Yeah.
So, you know, all those items. And then not to mention. You know, depending on. You know, depending on subsurface soils, you know, we can do our best to predict infiltration rates, but. You know, there are cases where the soils were not categorized correctly, there might have been some issues with construction. Like they didn't have filter fabric or whatever, so there's some user error too. Um, and, I mean. We, or I primarily do not use those for paved areas unless you absolutely have to. And the mechanisms in place for this, so for new developments, it's a no-go. For redevelopments, um, you can use it, but you have to really. It's really at the discretion of the planning board to grant a waiver for redevelopment, and what that means is. So like, for example, the Depot Street warehouse that was undeveloped woods, that's a new development under mast D E P stormwater regs. The Mechanic Street warehouse, which was an old junkyard and, um, buildings with the paved parking, that's a redevelopment. So. We just have.
Those terms have redefined.
Correct, new development and redevelopment is specific to mast D E P stormwater regs.
What about projects that are underway? And I, I don't want to say that they come in with a change or something.
So.
Say they had a, I don't want to get too specific, say, say somebody like tonight had a, had.
I, I know.
Somebody, somebody comes in and they've got a detention basin, and all of a sudden, halfway through the project, they decide, no, I want to do an underground. What, what, how does that, that wouldn't be covered?
It would, because it's a re, that would be, it could, it would either be a new development, if they already have the basin in place.
Say they've already got, they've, they've got the board pool.
Yep, so that, so if they have the, the, um, like if they have a roadway in place, like you're saying, like if there's a subject. For example.
For example.
They've put in a couple houses, they have four more to put in, they have a basin, or they don't have a basin.
All of a sudden, they want to switch.
And they want to switch it, so that would most likely fall under redevelopment, I would think. Or if it's an amendment, I think, Jim, you might have to chime in here, but. Basically with this, we grant, we have the authority to grant the waiver, so. If there's already an improved basin, and they can't prove that. There is a reason behind the basin not performing adequately. For example, if they, like, one reason I could see that happening is if. They do the test pits at the basin, and then all of a sudden they hit, you know, one foot down this ledge, obviously. We require them to do soil tests previous to the design phase, but. Then that might suggest a reason to, to provide, to do the underground infiltration system. But I'm pretty sure we still have the.
Yeah, looking at the second paragraph in the word new development applications, so I was just wondering how that was, one that's kind of in the middle. Partial, the word new, partially developed, like, we get that one up in, um. On the Franklin, towards the Franklin line, all of a sudden, ten years later, it comes back.
Yeah, so, if I'm not mistaken, if you're doing a, well, Jim, I see you're unmeeting yourselves, so.
Good, so, um, so I guess an amendment to. Uh, an existing permit, or, you know, we have thresholds for a development plan, so, let's say ten thousand square feet of new disturbance. Um, would require review, uh, so, I mean, we could look at those definitions and tighten them up, however, uh, the board wishes. Um, I would say, a big picture, uh, DPW would certainly agree with you in terms of. Uh, the underground chambers are not recommended, uh, we've actually. The board historically has always said no open air, we did one, um, I think subdivision with it. As a kind of a test run to see how it goes, uh, but we don't have a mechanism really to clean, we don't have a vacuum or anything like that. Uh, so it's, um, good, but so, you know, that, it's always been open air for subdivisions. Private, I would say the, the, um, like the warehouses and the like. The, the thought, or the, the reason typically, and, and Rob probably knows, I mean. It's not really because of cost, or not really a preference one way or the other, it's more of that, they have. Now they can put it under a parking lot, and now you have more area to, to build on, so now you got, you can expand your warehouse, you could. Put parking spaces there, that would typically be a, a, you know, a, a hole in the ground for. For runoff, so that, that's open area for them to then develop on, so that would, I think, be the only thing that, um. For consideration, really, is all.
Something like new or amended development application, something like that.
Yeah, we could, we could certainly look at those definitions real close, so we, we could tighten them up easily, not a problem.
I mean, Jim, do you have any opposition to this at all, do you see any issues, or are you kind of in agreement?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm wholly in agreement in your analysis of it, um, absolutely, um. You know, I, I. I, I just, I simply would be interested to know, I guess, what kind of the industry standards there is, some of the other town standards are. Because, I mean, yes, I hear the benefits, um, and maybe we're at a time where this is an appropriate addition to the, the bylaw. I'm just simply thinking, uh, out, uh, lots of land and how they could be developed out, and are we. Limiting, uh, opportunities there, if we mandate only. Uh, these, uh, these large detention basins, uh, open air detention basins, excuse me. Uh, because some, sometimes, you know, it, there is. Uh, a benefit, I guess, to hiding these, and, and, um, that gives you greater flexibility in developing out a lot of land. Uh, but, I mean, if this is, I, I understand the benefits here of clean quality, uh, runoff, getting back into our ground. And into our aquifer, so, uh, completely understand that, and don't have any opposition, I would write to it, absolutely.
I can ask you a question here, so the alternative to these underground treatments is, is the open air?
Correct, yeah, so, you really have, you know, you have two options for infiltration. Underground or love ground.
And, and a lot of times in terms of the subdivisions, as you'll see, I mean, we already hear the, the concerns about the, the fencing. No one wants to put the fencing around it, because it's an aesthetic thing, well, a lot of people, people don't want to put the detention basins in. And either, because it's just kind of a pimple, uh, in the middle of their subdivision, and they prefer to put the underground. You know, the, the one that we did do, I'll, I'll use as an example, is that Macy Estate. And that was simply because it, it was directly next to a park, and we thought, for safety purposes, let's try the underground. Uh, chamber, uh, as opposed to the open air, uh, so that, you know, kids don't jump around and play in there.
It, it, and is there an alternative to using up the underground requirements?
Not really, so, it's all about the pre-treatment. Now, the issue becomes, and this is especially, um, true for. Roadways, which is what I think Jim was talking about with the DPW really opposing these underground infiltration chambers. Because you would need to do, you know, deep some catch basins, then to a water quality unit, most likely, which is. It's basically just a vortex chamber, water comes in, swirls around, it pushes, it separates so, uh, silt and sediment. And then it goes out, cleaner water goes out to the chambers. The issue is, is that those water quality units, they're supposed to be cleaned out once a year, now, um. Catch basins are also supposed to be cleaned out once a year. Without pissing off people in town, um, you know, they.
They're off or not.
They, the, yeah, the, the DPW, I, I'm sure had, they have a huge. Inventory of catch basin structures to clean. Every single community in Commonwealth is similar, and you asked with the Bellingham, that it's one of those things that. You know, I have to go fix a sinkhole in a road, or I have to go clean a catch basin, you know, and.
A lot of it's summed up too.
It, a lot of it is summed up, exactly, so you have, you know, it goes to budgets too, because it's not cheap, so. The alternative is, yeah, you can put treatment beforehand, but then there's the maintenance aspect, which. That's the other thing that concerned me, even with the private developments, is that. Any catch basin, any water quality unit is supposed to be maintained, um, we have a, a long-term O N M plan that's required with our stormwater. Reports, but, I mean, as far as the actual records of these things happening, and. You know, you never know, and that's why typically what happens is when these fail, they just, they're underground for twenty years, who knows what's in them? You know.
So, what's your point tonight, you want to drop this ball in Jimmy's lap, is that what we're doing?
He's smiling.
Hi, Jim, good thing you're in the stomach cake, you can't hit him.
Yeah, Jim, you're not, nothing going on.
Yeah, no, uh, just like the last one, though, I'm happy to bounce it around to different departments and get their input, I'm sure DPW actually would have a lot to. Lot to be able to add into this, and then tighten up, and same with town council, and, um. And, and Rob, Rob, I mean, I'm sure, uh, this is probably stemming from some best practices you've seen elsewhere, so. Um, yeah, uh, we can certainly, um, put it around the horn to all the different departments and. And bring it back with some, uh, some suggested edits, perhaps.
Yeah, I'd like to entertain a motion to move forward on these two items.
So what does that mean?
Yeah.
To move forward, to draft it, to see what we want to do.
Further investigate?
Well, you, you, you're the lawyer, whatever terminology.
Really?
You're the worst, whatever terminology you want to be, fine by me. So move on.
So move forward.
To move forward. Potential warrant, dropping on Jim's lap.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
My motion passes. We all had a chance to review the, um, meeting minutes more. Last meeting.
Yeah, I got some things.
Go ahead.
So. I think we had some issues with the voting, roll call. So. Um, so the stormwater, so stormwater management modification. On the, um. Three fifty-three, so, I don't, Nick, you weren't able to vote on, on the actual development plan, right? So, I think that's the issue, right, what's one, and then we got to the special permit.
So, um, you're talking page, uh, three?
Page three, um, the first quote.
Yeah.
That because it was the stormwater management decision, there's only three of us that were.
Correct, you're right.
So.
It was just a type.
Yeah, so.
I don't, I don't, I don't believe you both.
No, I don't either, and then I, I didn't, you didn't vote either.
No.
Those three of us, this, yeah, and the next one, same thing, and, that was a special permit, so Rob could vote. But Nick, but, so then we had one, two, three, four, five votes on that. Did you vote?
I didn't vote Brian.
You didn't vote Brian, so that means, Brian's gonna come out too, so there was four, four passed the motion.
Current.
So that was there, and then. The other one, the next one was a special permit as well, I think it's the same thing, we'll get Brian and Nick. So that we did have four that passed. And then the scenic road, this one I wasn't sure about, but the scenic road are the same thing, I think, was just. Right?
Could not be.
Right, okay, so that went there, and then. Changed, uh, page four, the fourth. Who made the motion on that? You should be no seconded. It was only, it was, it wasn't you chairman, so.
What, what are you at?
Uh, page four at the top. Special permit.
Yeah, so Nick, you didn't vote, right?
He couldn't have made a mo, he didn't make a motion, and you weren't voting, so it would have, yeah, it was probably.
Might have been reversed the way, or then maybe I made a motion, instead of seconding.
And then, would have been seconded, me?
Yes.
Okay, so Dennis. And then. Phil, and Rob voted, so that's okay, and then the scenic road, it took out the, uh, Nick. So that, that was there, and then, I think, that was.
Roll calls were correct.
It was the last, uh, Bellingham Shore Residential. Special permit, I wasn't sure whether that one. But I know one, two, three, four, five, six, all six of us are showing that he's voted, which, that doesn't make sense. So I made the, I made the motion.
I don't think Nick could have voted on that. No, hold on, Jim.
I don't, I don't know what happened there.
All sins could, if we look at, um, the last item we voted on. I think it's just a clerical error, or hearing error here, general business, business shores. Major residential complex, special permit, condition number eighteen. I don't believe Nick could have voted.
So, this was a modification, or the, the review of the condition, right, Nick could vote on that.
Okay.
So then Mr. Lucy.
Then, then Ron could not, Rob could not.
Ri- right, Rob would not have voted on that one.
Jim silenced me for that.
The next one's just the meeting agenda, that's.
Yeah.
You, you did make the motion.
Yeah, yes.
All right, so.
We need to amend, um, if you could.
Yeah, I'll, you want me to drag this in now?
Amy?
Yeah, I, I'll take this one.
Or you can just give it to the assistant.
Oh, that's even better.
Oh, I'm going to vacation guy, come on.
Nice.
I'll take care.
All right, so. All right, I can do the markup.
Yeah, I'll get, make sure.
So that's, everything else is fine.
Entertained a motion, um, amend the motions, the vote to approve the minutes as amended.
Seconded.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Standing, objecting, that motion passes unanimously. Entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
You want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you for driving me through all this.
I think a lot of it was hearing, Amy, I don't think it was.